And let's, let's bow for prayer, shall we? Heavenly Father, we do acknowledge your goodness, your blessings, your authority, and your way here on earth. And we, we know that as Durkheim once warned, this concept of enemy can come when there is time of social upheaval and there's a loss of structure, a loss of morals, loss of convictions and other controls. And we certainly do not wish that, and yet none of us have control over that. And so we do seek you this day as the source of legitimate authority. We lift up this day to you, which you have given to us. We acknowledge the burden on the people of this government, decisions that demand wisdom with answers which can often seem beyond our reach. And so we do pray for your spirit to guide us. We pray for the peace you alone can bring, your shalom. And we pray all this together in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Everyone should have received a copy of the May 23 minutes. Were there any questions or revisions?
I didn't see any.
I did not see any.
But I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes three zero.
Two close bids. That number is $1,117,461.
That was part of the community crossings grant. Well, not the grant, that was part of the project that we were gonna do and they wrote a little bid on it.
And which project was it?
The 1,204.
1,204.
And 900 East. Approximately eight mile road. Our portion would be, I wrote it down, we had actually got in-house estimate that, I did an in-house estimate, I did it like $1,300,000 is what I was expecting it to come in around there. And it came in lower, $1,117,000.
Okay.
And so we were awarded $979,000 from the state, from the community crossings. But since the bid came in lower, then our award amount would come in lower because they can only give 75% of that.
Right.
Which was $838,000 and some change. But then that also brings our 25% down by $40,000. So our portion of that eight mile road would be $279,000 that the county has to pay with, with getting that grant.
Eight miles.
Do we need to, do we need to make a motion on that? To accept the milestone?
Yes.
So milestones, the, the bid that you wanted to accept?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, commissioners?
Nope, sounds good.
Nope. Great. I entertain a motion to accept the milestone bid in an amount of $1,117,461.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
And they were planning on doing that project this season. I don't know what month, but this paving season this year, that will be done.
Is that the 900 East?
Yeah.
Project that just keeps on giving.
Keeps on giving.
So this, is this one of the final ones you think we're gonna go?
Well, it keeps getting closer every month. Really them invoice vouchers are showing what the state is paying us back, so they're, they're not actual bills.
Right, right. It looks like it's 1.08 million and we pay like 1.04 so far, so, okay.
They've reimbursed us each time.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. No worries. Any questions on the voucher?
No.
I entertain a motion to sign the OPA claim voucher for Lock Mueller in the total amount of $8,631.67 with 80% reimbursable.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero.
Just an update, we're still trying to finalize some stuff about getting a salt sand building on the county property. I know you guys had asked about that. Get, get it finalized enough to where we can put something out to bid. So I've looked into a fabric structure and it's roughly $80 a square foot. And then I've looked into going with a metal building and it's roughly $35 a square foot. The metal and the salt don't mix and I think Mr. Gabhart, we talked about that too. So we've looked at other options.
Feel like I'm in trouble when you say Mr.
Mr. Gabhart.
Like you're back in school.
Yes. I think when Mr. Spillman would call us by our mister, we knew just to straighten up.
Yeah. Well, but we are looking at some options. If we go with the, the steep, the cheaper steel structure, outside would be steel with stainless steel screws, but the inside would have a, we'd put plywood or OSB board on the inside and a vapor barrier between it. So the salt that would be on the inside of the building would not be able to erode and, and rust out the, the rest of the building. So we, we've seen, I think I said White County did a metal building and that's what they did. They, they lined the whole inside with plywood so the salt and the dust couldn't settle on the metal and rust it out. Typically that's what happens. That's what happened to our old building downtown. It starts rusting it out from the inside out.
Yeah.
And then, so we probably need to get together and talk about some different options as a group.
How many square feet would the building be anything?
The, the fabric building was actually a little smaller. It was, I had it wrote down, 14,000 square feet. And, and just a rough estimate on the fabric building was $1,140,000. The metal building was twice the size and there was some reason for that, which we can cut it down. It was 20,800 square feet and it was roughly, I forget where I wrote that. I think it was a million, $35. And I know at one time when I was talking to the council, we would, I think we got a council guy here, we were talking about liking to get that number down. I think they were wanting to support us, but to see if we can get that number down. Cause my initial estimates have been around a million, the, the metal building. Just in conversation with you guys and, and the public, we're talking about getting rid of our salt sand building that we have downtown, cause I could probably give you a mile long list of why we don't need it there. Then we're talking about getting rid of our other storage that we have at the old shop. So with the fabric building, it's just one big bay and the salt is there. And if I put any equipment in there, it'd rust out my equipment with the condensation and the salt. So the metal building, we is actually gonna put a lean-to off of it and make an extra bay and, and seal it off, cause we could do that with the metal and use it for storage of some of the equipment and stuff that's getting stored at the other two facilities right now. So we got three sites right now that we're storing equipment.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think overall, I mean, we wanna, we wanna build a 50 to 75 year old building, you know, that's gonna last. And, and if we can have a multipurpose building and consolidate our space, I think that's gonna pay off. I guess the only thing I would ask is, you know, can we just look at our budget that we currently collect from our, our current taxing sources and how much can we generate on our own? And then, you know, and then ask the council for as few additional dollars as possible. But the, the metal slash storage building sounds to me like the more reasonable.
Per square foot, it was.
Per square foot, $80 a square foot versus 30, I mean.
Well, and just getting the stuff out of downtown Washington, you know, and, and making it more centralized.
You're gonna save a lot of money and time and fuel and everything.
Yeah. The, going after the salt downtown is our biggest hurdle that, it, it slows us down tremendously when we're trying to get out there and we're bringing trucks in with 12 and 14 foot plows in the front of them and trying to maneuver through Washington to get salt. We lose probably an hour and a half, easy an hour to an hour and a half by the time we come from the county, into town, get loaded up and try to get back out to the county where the salt goes.
Well, can we, I mean, like I know Ron and Michael, you guys have worked on this some as well. So I mean, it sounds like the metal, multi-purpose building, can we focus on that option and then look at how many dollars we have on hand and just see what the difference is and we'll see if the council is supportive of that.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do that. I think the steel building would be the right way to go at the end of the day, cause maybe all the square foot, you're still, you're talking the fabric building and that, that fabric, it's got a life expectancy, you know, eight or 10 years probably, I don't know what it is.
I'm not sure on that. That was kind of a, I didn't get that. Yeah, I didn't get that far to see what it would cost to replace the, the fabric.
Yeah, cause if you start going over that year, I mean, 10 year, every, every decade, start replacing that fabric, it's gonna get costly.
Ron, what do you think?
Just know for what I think. Are there any supports within the building that would be exposed on a metal building?
No. We, we were gonna put 10 foot high concrete around it and then it would have like three bays and it'd be 10 foot tall concrete and then from there, it, it will have plywood above it. So there's, there's not gonna be posts.
Thought in, but I think this building will actually last longer.
Yeah.
The metal, the multi-purpose.
Yeah, we, we wanted to, and really the, the metal building would have been even cheaper. Had we put poles in it, but we wanted to eliminate the poles, cause they get hit and...
Yeah. Yeah, I guess my, my only request is, is that we, we find every dollar that we can, we have on, in our accounts through the highway department. I know we've got some money invested. We've got these different pigeonhole accounts that, that are there for whatever reason. I mean, let's see how many dollars we legitimately have. And then we can show the council and, and see if they're willing to, to support the difference.
Yeah. And this gives me, with you guys making a decision or whatever, gives me a clear line of what way to proceed, so we can move ahead with it.
Okay. All right, good.
We did put out a, a bid for a new distributor truck. It's been advertised in the paper now. I think sometime in one of the July meetings, we will be accepting bids for that. That was an update on that. The other thing, just county forces, what we're currently doing now is we're currently applying dust control. It's almost like a two-month process. It takes us a month to prep all the, the rock and the sites, sometimes do a little ditching. And then, and then in June, we, we start applying the actual product to the, to the dust control spots. And I figured out, we got roughly 20 mile of dust control. And the way that it's applied, applied, we gotta go over it about twice, sometimes three times. So we're working on that. We're putting fabric and rock and calcium down on the roads that we tiled last year, which was nine, almost 10 mile road, new construction road. So we hope to have that done probably towards the end of this month. I've got a couple of questions I'll have to talk to you guys on, on one of the roads. And we're taking trees out on them roads. And I believe in July, August, we'll chip seal them. So that'll give us roughly 10 mile of new road this year. And, and then the first of July, we'll start tiling, hopefully another, we, we're shooting for 15 mile road is what we were shooting for last year.
Right.
But we couldn't get the tile rock from the, the trucking companies. So in July, we're gonna start tiling. I think that's it.
Sounds great. Gentlemen, anything else for Chris?
Nope.
Sorry. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we got the MJ insurance stop-loss renewal. We got Paul and Amy. Good morning.
Detective building.
Yeah, I mentioned your name first, you know, Amy's doing all the work.
Thank you.
How are you? Good to see you.
Thanks.
We got those three lines that we need to be using.
We have this from last year too.
If we could do this for the projects and save some money out there, you help pay for that building.
Yeah.
We do have Jessica from TRX here to help explain some of the pharmacy products that are going on. Thanks. Come on up here, Jessica. I brought a team with me this year, you know, you guys are pretty rough on me. A quick, little bit off the note, but kind of on the note that there was a email or letter sent out about DCH no longer part of the network for UMR. And so what happened was, there is a similar...
What's that? That's fine, that is fine.
There's a similar company that was out there and somebody picked the wrong company.
Company.
Had nothing to do with DCH not being UMR network, but somebody picked a similar company that is no longer in UMR network and pushed the button. And so letters went out to everybody about DCH no longer in the network. Now, it only affected not just the county, but First Financial was part of UMR and there's other companies part of UMR, they all got letters. So there was a massive influx of calls and I know you all got calls. And so it has been rectified, there was just a mistake and DCH is still in UMR network, which we are presenting today, which would've been hard to do if they were no longer in the network. All right. So I just want an explanation on that, as that thing's got kinda crazy about. And then here, I'm gonna give you a little overview of where we were, where we're at, where we're going. And then the other people. Went back a couple of years for a couple of reasons, but it's, it's all good at the end of the story. And we currently have an $85,000 deductible, see that at the top, and, and our recommendation is to stay at that, that level, the max amount of pocket. This is the reinsurance we buy for a catastrophe. So if everybody gets sick in the, gets sick in the county, we have an $85,000 per person, but we have a max. And as you can see, the max barely moved, and option is where you were at this year. See what says option, that's really where you're at this year. I went back another year to show you how you see the max amount of pocket. Couple of years ago was 4 million and this year it's 3 million. Part of that 4 million was the fact we had lasers. And we have no lasers this year, which is a, a great thing. And if you just glance at the next page, it shows you the lasers we'd had over the years. But anyway, you had to factor in the lasers with your maximum exposure and that's why a couple of years ago, our maximum exposure was four. With no lasers, we don't have to count that. And so actually our maximum is three. Again, down to the next page, you can see a couple of years ago, we had a laser of 575. We did not have a laser last year's renewal. And I'm really happy to say, we do not have a laser for this year's renewal.
No, no.
Okay. So our maximum exposure is 85 per person. Our fixed cost, back a couple of years ago, when we had some claims and, and large losses, our fixed costs were up. They have gone down last year. Again, option is last year. And this year they're up about 3%. So still quite a bit better than we were a couple of years ago. And that's our reinsurance cost. As you can see, we switched on the reinsurance, we switched from QBE to IISI. And that's just part of the marketing that goes out there and seeing where we can get the best deal. And so we switched from QBE to IISA. And IISI gave us another good renewal, so we're staying, recommending stay with them. Back down to the expected cost. These are numbers that Amy and her team put together along with the underwriters to try and determine what we expect the cost to be. Again, it's below the maximum, because we, we don't think we're gonna ever hit the maximum, so we go below that. We are recommending stay with UMR. So it looks good there. The next page just shows you real quickly about the lasers. We've had some pretty hefty lasers in the past and then we've had zero lasers the last two years. So those are things that we do need to consider. Today, my mission is to get an approval from the commissioners to lock in the reinsurance rates. Okay? This has nothing to do with the benefits. We lock in the rates for a August 1st lock-in rate. And then benefits are a January 1. So it has nothing to do with the benefits, but this is the lock-in that we'd like to get from the commissioners today. The next page just shows our current plan. This is what we currently have with the county. It's a very competitive and rich plan and I think it does the employees very well. The bottom down there, I did not put in there where it shows the rates. Currently under the HSA, we do contribute, or the county contributes $750 towards the employee HSA rate per year. The county contributes 1,500 towards the HSA benefit. So still very competitively priced, good benefit. Any questions on...
Did you say 750 or 1,500?
1,500.
Okay.
For a family.
Per family, yeah.
750 on the individual per year. The last page, cause I am going to recommend, we make a change, is it says, what we had in our plan design was a therapy visit limited to 20 visits per year. So the problem became is that if you had a knee replacement and you used up your 20 visits for that year, and then for some reason you got a broken arm and you need physical therapy again, well, you ran out of your physical therapy benefits. So I'd like to change it. If you look down at the bottom, it says effective 8-1. Change it to 25 visits, but then allow UMR, if you necessarily, medically necessary, to go ahead and give you additional physical therapy visits.
Does that make sense what I just said?
Yeah.
So we had a cap, now we're just saying cap, but if UMR determines, you can have additional visits. Questions on that change?
Can we, you said if you, you said if UMR determines that they need more visits, can we not just increase the number ourselves?
Well, you can, but you're still limiting yourself to a maximum number of visits.
Right, but if we go from 20 to 30, and then, if once we get UMR involved, it's just painful anytime you get any TPA involved.
Not arguing that point, but let's say you used your 20 visits on a broken leg.
Okay.
Two months later, you get a broken arm. Now you only have 10 visits for your broken arm.
Okay.
Cause it's per year, not per incident.
Why do we have any cap at all? I mean, are people abusing physical therapy visits?
Keeping the cost down, I guess.
But I guess, from a practical standpoint, is, is there much abuse?
Medically, medically necessary? I mean, we can leave it that way. It's just, when you have a, a set amount, it's easy to get those visits approved.
Okay.
As opposed to going through, like you just said, getting the approval from the TPA. If it's in the plan design, it's pretty easy for the doctor to say, well, you got 25 automatically approved. Otherwise, UMR, or UMR would have to review it.
Okay. As far as we know, there's no employees that are having any issues getting therapy?
Yes.
There are some.
There was. Could've been. And that's kinda what brought this whole thing to light. They did have a, and I'll just say a knee replacement. And the doctor said, you really need your other knee replaced? Well, then we went to check on the physical therapy, only he, he used up his 20 visits. So he had paid out of pocket 100% of the next one.
Yeah, that's my whole point. I mean, I'm spending two or three million dollars, I mean, we're talking hundreds of dollars of, you know.
Benefit.
We're talking about very small dollars. I just wanna make sure that there's no impediment of our, any of our covered members getting the physical therapy that they need is my only request.
Right. And we had a cap and we're just asking to remove it and let UMR be medically necessary to approval.
All right, good. Thank you.
They need, they could put 20 per occurrence.
Well, I guess it just, living in healthcare for 30 years, people are abusing opioids perhaps, but physical therapy sessions, probably not so much. Ash, I don't know what you've seen, but, but it sounds like you've got a solution in place, so.
I think that's...
As long as they get the therapy they need, that'd be great.
That's kinda where we need to grow at, at, after these girls are done, giving you all the major details. So I'll let Amy start with the medical side of how we came up with some of the numbers we came up with and why we're projecting what we are.
Thanks, Paul. I'm gonna be going through this document now. In the interest of time, I'll try to be efficient here. So on page three, we're looking at historical trend. And so this is just comparing how the county has run over the past seven years compared to national trend. When I speak of trend, that's, that's just basically healthcare inflation. So what's the cost of healthcare? How's that going up each year? National trend has been 6.81% over the past seven years. Your trend has been negative 2.03%. So you guys have run very well compared to national trend. So that's just to give you a little bit of history. Your, your costs are very competitive from a trend standpoint compared to national benchmarks. On the next page, we're looking at page four. So this is a budget summary of how we're running on your stop-loss plan year. So this is looking at August of 2022 through April of 2023 healthcare claims. This is both medical claims, pharmacy claims, and fixed costs. In the top left corner, you'll see the budget summary. We're running at 97% of budget, so we're $62,000 to the good so far with, again, claims through April. Total plan spend is down 3%. Your total enrollment, looking up in the top right corner, is down 2%. So those things are kinda trending similarly. It's, your, your negative 3%, though, is mostly driven by the fixed cost reduction. So as Paul mentioned, we had a, a good stop-loss renewal last year. The stop-loss alone was a 13% decrease going into this time last year. That's why we moved to IISI. We got the 13% reduction on the fixed cost from a stop-loss standpoint. Over in the right side of the page, on the large claims, those are the red headers. So the large claims, those are looking at any claimant who has claims in excess of 42,500. That specific level is set at 50% of what your spec deductible is, which is 85,000. So we have five claimants that have exceeded claims in the amount of 42,500. We only have one claimant that has exceeded 85,000. So we're having a, a pretty good year from a large claim standpoint. Last year, we actually didn't have any claimants that exceeded that 85,000, which led to the favorable renewal that we got last year.
So Amy, if I understand this right, the, the fixed cost is for the stop-loss insurance?
It's that plus UMR admin fees.
The admin fee, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. So that's why it's a 13% on stop-loss, but then you also have to factor in the UMR admin fees. And we don't have any other large claimants of concern. The other four claims that you've had that have exceeded 50% of the spec deductible, were all really episodic, one-time things. They, they don't appear to be ongoing claimants. So that's what led to a, a pretty favorable renewal this year, which is on the next page, on page six. So we go to market every year to several stop-loss carriers. We got nine declinations from other stop-loss carriers, basically saying, we can't match the rates that you have or get close to that, so they just declined to quote. These prices will be effective 8-1 of 2023. So we have the current listed in that first column. If you look down at the total fixed cost, on a per employee per month or PEPM basis, we're looking at $275.37. We got the initial renewal, which is the next column over, which is to 8827, which is a 4.7% increase. We negotiated that down just a little bit to 28460, which is a 3.4% increase on a per employee per month basis. Or if you annualize that, that's $21,715. So that is the renewal that Paul was referring to, that we would recommend taking this renewal with IISI. Not recommending changing the specific deductible, keeping that at 85,000. Like Paul mentioned, we don't have any lasers. And your maximum cost down there towards the bottom in that revised renewal column, that's what Paul was explaining, it's just over $3 million. Any questions?
That's good.
Okay. So that is all I had. Just will turn it over to TRX now.
Hello, everyone. I am Jessica from TRX. I brought Janay, she's the account manager for your plan. And then Ashley, she's gonna help answer any clinical questions you may have. If you take a look at the first page of the review, it does show that we will be discussing the current period claims, comparing them to the prior period. So the period is 8-1 2022. So the period is 8-1 2022 through 4-30 of 2023. We will discuss the benefits overview, any kind of member experience we've had, financial results, and then the clinical portion. Okay, on page four, those are the current programs that you currently utilize. So True Assist and True Advocate, those are for those specialty medications if and when they do fall back on the plan. True Assist is when we utilize those copay cards. And True Advocate is when we utilize manufacturer's assistance to try to get those specialty drugs free of charge. You also utilize the True Guard program to keep some of those high-cost drugs off the plan that have very low value, and utilize the universal formulary. Page six is the member experience. So during that January to March of 2023, we did get 26 phone calls from members of your plan. Out of those calls, they did rate us a five out of five star patient satisfaction, and there was a 96% first call resolution, meaning that those members were taken care of the first time that they called in. There has been a decrease in average member counts per month. It's down to 349. Okay, and then there on page seven. So currently, there's, there were 3,468 prescriptions filled on the plan, so down just a little bit, which you would expect that with a lower member count. 78% though, of your members are filling one or more medications. So they are utilizing the plan for their prescriptions, not having any issues getting those filled. Average prescription per member per month is up just slightly to 1.10 per member. All right, so now the costs. So the plan cost has gone up slightly. It has gone up 15%, but that is due to the diabetic spend. As we know, diabetic drugs are everywhere, everyone's getting those, and so the cost of those is going up. Plan costs per member per month, they're on page 10. Current period, 11746 per member per month. Average plan cost per prescriptions at 10644. So with an increase in the plan cost and the decrease in member count, there has been a 26% per member per month increase. Pretty standard what we're seeing across the board. Then on to page 11. So currently, 86% of the claims filling on the plan are generic drugs. So we want to see that number as high as possible. It does make up 22% of the plan's cost. And then 14% of the drugs filling on the plan, those are brand medications. The majority of those you'll see are diabetic as we get further. And they are making up 78% of the plan's cost. So although there is a smaller percentage of those brand drugs, you will see that they do make up the biggest portion of the cost. And there are no specialty drugs currently filling. Moving on to page 12, current period there at the bottom, breaking it out by brand, generic, and specialty. So there's been 498 brand medications filled. Average plan cost for those is around $580.70 each. Generic medications, there's been 2,970 of those filled. Average plan cost for those is just $2691. So again, as you'll see in a minute, the average plan cost per brand claim increase is due, again, to that diabetic drug class. Page 13, so on that, it shows you your net brand plan cost. So brand plan cost is at $289,000, but the rebates coming back are over $61,000. That's just an estimate, could be less, could be more. So net plan cost is around $228,000, being a 21% of costs and rebates coming back to the plan, because TruRex does pass 100% of our rebates back to you. Page 14, so that's where we get into that diabetic medication. So the diabetic medication plan spend, prior period was only at $134,000. We are currently up to 100, over 182,000, almost 183. So that's a 36.25% increase in diabetic spend alone. We do have a pilot program, we can discuss later, at a later date, to help with that diabetic cost. So if you guys are interested in that, just let us know, we can get that scheduled. If you look down at the bottom, current period, the average cost per prescription for diabetic is at $664.73. So even that's increased. The average generic cost per prescription, though, is down to just $11.20 for diabetic. So that did decrease, so just great, but you don't see those generic diabetics very often. So that's not going to have a huge impact. Okay, we will discuss some of the clinical portion, starting on page 16. Again, diabetic everywhere. So as you'll see, six out of seven of those drugs, which are the top drugs by plan cost, are diabetic drugs. Over to the right, you will see the plan costs for each one and the claim count to the left of that, to give you a better idea of how many are filling and then what that plan cost was. Moving on to page 17. So we'll do the top drug classes. So by claim count, you've got your hypertension and heart disease, diabetes, antidepressants, antibiotics, high cholesterol, ulcerine, asthma. So hypertension and heart disease by claim count, so there were 414 of those filled. 94 members filling those. Diabetic, 311 prescriptions filled and 39 members utilizing. Going down to the bottom, we'll go by plan cost. Again, diabetes is number one. Again, 39 members filling, 311 scripts filled at $166,000 in plan cost. Then you've got your asthma, your attention disorders, your high cholesterol, diabetic supplies, migraine, and gastrointestinal. So at TruRex, we do, we have the pharmacists, right? So pharmacists, healthcare professionals on your team, providing cost containment and personal patient care. So we're always rolling out new programs to assist you and your patients. So one of those programs is True Code. So True Code, that is where we would take any of those J-code medications, those infusions and such, that are on the medical side of your plan, getting billed through there, and move those over to the RX portion. Not only do we try to make it more convenient for the patient, but it's going to dramatically lower those costs of those infusions going through on the medical side. So if you guys have any interest in that, we are happy to set up some time to discuss that further.
Yeah, perhaps on that one, if you could have MJ run the numbers, see if we have any J-codes running through UMR.
Sure.
And see which ones are applicable, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then there on page 21, so that's just basically everything that we've discussed, put into one slide so that you can have it all together. Any questions for me?
No, that was great.
Okay, wonderful, I appreciate it, thank you, guys.
And back to, I know we're paying more for brand names, but also sometimes brand names is the right choice. We've had people try to, or the doctors, or whoever, or you, probably UMR, but somebody tried to make them go to generics, and sometimes the generics don't work, and people get upset, saying, hey, I've been on this brand name, and they're trying to switch me back to a generic to save cost. And, you know, just sometimes the brand name is the way to go. Helped through the cost of this drug. No, okay. I still, today, need a motion, if you can, on approving the UMR renewal with the change of the therapies. And then we can lock in that rate and make sure we're set to go for another year.
That sounds good. I think increasing the visits makes sense, and then locking in those stop-loss rates while we can, all makes sense.
August 1st, yeah.
If there is no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve both. Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye. Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. See ya, thanks, guys. All right, next up, we've got Washington Carnegie Library Appointment of Richard Powers. He's the Board of Commissioner appointee to the board.
Right.
So if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve his appointment.
Submove.
Motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. Okay, next up with the, oh, the Longevity Pay Plan Committee. We got Jennifer Welsh as the appointee. If there's, if there's no grave concerns with appointing Jen to that committee, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Submove.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0. Okay, and then lastly, we got the Historical Society, reached out to the Historical Society, to the museum, and they reached out to the state, and they've discussed internally, and they would like to nominate Bruce Smith as the Davies County historian. And then Bruce will have some associates as well that he will appoint through the state. So if there's any, if there's no other questions or concerns, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Submove.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next up, annual, annual information for continuing disclosure clients. Sounds.
Sounds fun.
Sounds gripping. What do we have?
It's for your 2018 bonds.
Oh, okay, okay.
You got it there, Nathan.
Yeah, so this is the 2018 bonds. Is this for the annex?
Yeah.
So we need to.
They do this annually. They just want to ask you if the information makes sense, and then they file these for us. Even if we don't respond, they file this for us, but it's just an update on edit tax rates. Overall budget, it's a good snapshot from Baker-Till.
Okay, great. So this is regarding the 2018 bond that we took out for the annex financing, which we bonded 2.94 million and then paid cash with the rest. And some of those bond payments are made back with edits, so this just has all the historical information. So if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Submove.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
A lot of good information in that report.
All right, so as we're getting those signed, next up, the courthouse renovation update. We got, it's kind of a full day of some meetings and some walkthroughs and so forth. So I'll go and give the podium to the ladies and gentlemen, and whatever we need to discuss here, we can. And we also have some time later on today.
Okay.
As well, so.
Okay. Just a quick update while we're getting things on the screen. So we have been working on the courtroom design, and in particular, the built-in items. So the judge's bench, and the reporter, and witness stand. And we've got some images that we can show you when those are available. We're also, we have a corner, we have located this in the corner. Judge Smith has asked us to look at an option that's also a little more orthogonal, still in the corner. And so here are some, here's some imagery. This is looking from the judge's bench out into the courtroom space. The other image we have is of the judge's bench, where you can see, you can see the judge's bench and the witness stand, court reporter space. That's, we, in the design of this, we've been working with the square footage that we got from Garmong, from their estimate, so that we're keeping within that, those square footage on the millwork and things like that, so. That's, this is still in process. We still, I think we're getting close, from what I understand, but we still are looking at a little bit more orthogonal arrangement for Judge Smith.
What's, what's that mean?
Oh, 90 degrees, so like, instead of.
I'm sure these two guys knew, but.
I'm sorry.
He wants the, the judge's portion of the bench to be more centered in the room.
Okay.
A little bit change in direction.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
We're also looking at some carpet samples. We're still trying to kind of hone in on the carpet for the courtroom for Judge Smith. We also are, I think, at a point where we need to really think about furniture. And our recommendation would be that you work with a specialist that can help you assess the condition of your existing furniture and help you determine, you know, what goes into this renovation, if you need some additional new pieces, they can help with that. There is a company called Relocation Specialist, and they work with procurement for municipalities such as yourself. And it's a discount program that you can get up to 75% off of your furniture. So that's one option that you may have. We do have someone in our office that has gone through this program on a project with Relocation Specialist. And he, so I talked to him about it, and he said he felt like it was a pretty good saving, so. So we'll, we'll look to you for kind of guidance in terms of whether you want to engage this company or not. We also will start.
I guess, just on that one, I guess I would be looking for you guys to advise us on.
Okay.
I mean, when we did this project, if my memory recalls me correctly, I mean, the people we hired just kind of told us, here's your options, which way do you want us to go? So.
On the furniture itself?
Yeah.
When you're talking furniture, you talk, what do you, what kind of furniture?
Well.
Are you talking about the existing, even the, all the woodwork in there?
So not just on the courtroom, but, so you have existing furniture, you've got existing shelving for historic records. You've got a lot of different furniture items in this renovation. Little bit different than a new building. And so my recommendation, our recommendation, would be that you work with someone who routinely does this, so they can help you assess what you have and what you need. So space that has been reconfigured or expanded, et cetera. You know, it's not as simple as taking the existing shelves you have and move it into the new space. You may need less space or more space for records, et cetera. So this is a company that routinely does this. And the reason I would recommend Relocation Specialist is just because they routinely work with Omnia, and I believe, from what I understand, you can get a really good discount on new furniture.
Do they work up via RQAW or via Garmong? Or is this a third party that we have to manage?
This, they would be contracted to you directly.
So we'll now have three people, we're, I'm just trying to keep this as streamlined as possible. Who manages this company?
Who man, well, we can work with them to, you know, because, well, we will work with them, right? Whoever does this will work with them, because as architects, we're, you know, shaping the floor plan, et cetera. And that goes hand in hand with, you know, for example, workstation, things like that, so.
Okay, I mean, does that make sense, gentlemen?
They don't manufacture, they just.
No.
Decide what you need, and then they take it out.
Yeah, so what, they, they can even help, if you, if you desire, they can help you with your move management, even in terms of all of the furniture, so they can help you figure out how to get everything moved, what goes, what stays, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely would like to see some more information on that, the cost.
Okay.
And just, I'm just more concerned with the organizational chart. What I, I want the commissioners to remain like the tip of the spear, but I don't want.
Not making the.
Three pillars underneath this.
...three pillars underneath this, and...
Jeremy's the project manager, should be running through him, and hopefully get his cake on.
Yeah, and so, what Rebecca's referring to, it's going to be, if you were to look at this room, it's, it's everything that's not fixed, so it's, if we're building this annex project, it's chairs that are sitting, it's probably, it's the podium, it's four chairs that are up there, so it's, it's your, uh, unfixed furniture.
Okay.
So, Nathan, to your question, construction contract's going to build all of the fixed buildings in the courtroom. Here in the clerk's office is the desks, it's the chairs, it's the...
Okay.
This company is, is just...
The workstation.
More, more or less like consulting services, or is that basically what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's all...
Yeah, so right now, this is a, a line item, that's about five percent of your...
Procurement, yes.
This is a line item that's carried in your soft cost right now, it's called the FFNE, Furniture Fixtures and Equipment.
Yeah.
That'd be, you know, that'd be if you're, uh, deciding as you move, if there's a copier that you're moving, or if you, there is, if this is the time to replace that, so. At this, at that next stage, at the continuation of, um, or the completion of design development, moving into construction documents, where Rebecca's referring to, is that time where we're really deciding, all right, what do we want to do, following any public procurement process, since that is kind of an owner-direct purchase for the FFNE, um, those items, and, you know, Rebecca and her team are going to be coordinating. If there is anything new, how it fits in, colors and selections, and how it relates and fits in with that design.
Gentlemen, what do you think?
It's the way to go.
Way to go, okay. Yeah, all right, give us a number, some costs for these organizations that we're referring to, and, um, we don't have a, I guess, when do you need a decision from us? Because we don't have a June twenty-seventh meeting.
Um, I, I think that we could do the meeting following June twenty-seventh.
First Sunday.
I can disseminate information, so you have that at that meeting.
Okay, that'd be great.
And a lot, in most cases too, this is something you're going to buy, that's, well, a budgeted amount, from the construction documents perspective, it's not a prerequisite or a, um, a constraint to getting the bid documents out. You, you can be picking out that furniture as construction progresses, and...
Yeah, you have a timeline that exceeds design.
Okay. So this consulting company, what, what are their fees?
I do not know, I can, I can find, I can get all of that information for you. Um, today's question is whether you have an interest in this and hearing further.
Got an interest in knowing how much they charge.
Okay, got it. Okay. Um, I think the other thing that we've got going on today is our meeting with DNR, and we have Carl Boat, who is an architectural historian, coming from our office to that meeting, and Carl was involved four years ago with DNR, when we initially met with them, so there's some continuity there. Um, but we are going to be walking around with them and seeing, uh, uh, you know, making sure that what they said four years ago in terms of the renovation, and what they want to see is still the case today. So we'll, we'll hear from them. Um, and then, I think the other thing that we want to talk about with Garment is just the schedule, right? So, are we, you know, we delivered, uh, design development documents ten days after the original deadline, so we want to know if, if it's possible at all to, you know, still maintain the final CD, uh, delivery date of August twenty-second, or kind of how that works, and I think we can have a, a bigger discussion about that.
Correct. How close are we to getting there? We're down to like ninety-nine percent done?
So, when we go into the, the construction document phase, the next deadline would be July eleventh, according to the original schedule, and that's a fifty percent set that will allow you guys to just kind of look at it, give you a chance to review it, get, give Garment a chance to review it, to make sure, what the assumptions that we're making, what your assumptions that you have.
Yeah, and I guess a reminder of those design phases, so kind of that schematic phase, design development and CD phase. Design development, we're at, um, I think we had some revisions and stuff, as of last week, we've got that complete design development set. So, from a percent complete of overall, that's typically in that fifty, sixty percent range, so these last few months are the remaining, you know, forty percent of overall completed design. So Rebecca and Larry's team will be putting specifications together, all the details that are out there, so we've got, you know, more details in this set, um, and be that finalized construction documents that we take. So, um, and their goal is continuing on, uh, that August twenty-second completion set, and having a, kind of the halfway point of that CD set review, July eleventh.
When's the bidding process start?
We would, uh, we would start at the end of August, um, when we receive that set. So typically, what we'll do is we'll have a notification, obviously we're going to notify through, uh, DNA code, uh, five thirty-two.
You make up any number.
So the public bid process, we're going to notify the public twice.
Right.
We'll, uh, release that, and then typically, it's going to be out to, um, the bid market for about a three week.
So September?
Yeah, by the end of, our goal is by the end of September, we would be receiving bids.
Perfect, that's, okay, that's kind of what I thought. Okay, that's the, that's obviously the important time.
Yep.
Get the bids in, and that's when we have to start saying yes or no to different departments, and, and then again, all, all the stuff we're looking at now are, you know, as, as generous as we can possibly be, and then once the bids come back, then that's when we may have to go back and start...
Start a little bit, yeah.
Shrinking a little bit. Um, unless the council just gives a, a blank check, which I hope they don't, but...
Seems unlikely.
Seems unlikely, yeah.
So we, we have a laundry list of a few things to go through later today, um, here, and, uh, and as part of that bid process too, we have started populating what we'll call an alternate list. You know, some of the extras of things that we've asked for through, uh, that they've got input on through that design, started looking at those as possible add alternates. Budgets do allow.
Okay, great. And then, just regarding today, I know the walkthrough of the Historical Society, um, I know we advertised for some other meetings throughout the day, so, um, I know you're going to spearhead that.
Yeah.
I probably won't join for that phase, but Ron...
I will be.
That'd be great, and then, um, are we, are we sinking, we have reviews today from like one to three, and I think we all may be sinking up at some point this afternoon, but we'll just kind of see how the walkthrough goes, and if you guys need us for anything else. I think we have...
We'll be here somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, we'll be here somewhere, so, just while we're all together is when it is split.
Yeah, we're going to meet at eleven-one, I know you guys... Earl, there.
Yeah.
What time is our meetings over here start, one?
One o'clock, so we're pretty much wide open until one.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay. Awesome. Anything else that you, we need to discuss?
That sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we got the Visitors Bureau Commission update. Um, just wanted to kind of use this opportunity to kind of allow us all to kind of sync up here with where we're at and where we're going. Um, obviously, since December, we've spent a lot of time on the Visitors Commission with the increase in the innkeeper's tax, and there's a lot of great ideas, a lot of, um, visions that, um, we're, we're now incorporating into the future of the Vis- Visitors Commission Board. The current Visitors Commission Board, you know, has put in a lot of time and effort and, and energy over the past six months, really reevaluating the things they've done in the past, and kind of go forward plan of what the VC needs to look like. So, um, a lot of work's been done. Um, I, I did reach out to Natalie, um, this morning, and I think the first phase is coming to an end, where, of what the contract needs to look like, what the scope of work needs to look like, and I think for the next phase to be successful, we're going to have to restock some of the members of the Visitors Commission, um, committee. Good news is, the current members will serve on it for as long as we, as we need them to, so really hats off to all the current board members that are doing this on a voluntary basis. But for the next phase, I think it'd probably be best if we go ahead and, and look at some reappointments, and, I mean, go ahead and look at reappointing Natalie Smith, um, on the Visitors Commission, and leave her on the ABC and the West Gate, I guess she spends a ton of time and energy.
Yeah.
But, um, to go ahead and, uh, look at replacing that position on the commission, so, I want to get to your guys' thoughts, and, and, um...
Something's got to change, because we've got a lot of conflict going on, and a lot of missteps, I think, so I think we need, do need to look for a change.
Natalie serves on that commission, my recommendation, when I was in my previous job, and the reason I asked her to serve on that, to have continuity between the Development Corporation, the Visitors Bureau. She's done, done an excellent job doing that. She no longer works, she has a different job, and I think there needs to be more continuity between the organization. I mean, if, if, if the vision is to build a conference center, it's going to take input from several different entities to get that done, to build what I think everybody wants.
Yeah, I think their vision is definitely is to evaluate the, the need for the conference center, and we don't want an eight million dollar empty facility. Um, so, I think that's the vision, we'll see what actually materializes, but, um, but I think this first phase, the legwork and the contract negotiation and, and the scope of work details, um, I mean, that's a, that's a ton of work that they put into it, so I think we're ready to put a wrap on that phase, kind of reinforce the, the committee with some new energy, some new ideas, some new visions, and then to take what we've built and move forward, so. So I'd entertain a motion to, um, to remove Natalie Smith from the Business Commission Bureau.
Submove.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. Okay, we're not going to have a June twenty-seventh, uh, Board of Commissioner meeting, but we do need to make a motion to allow a single signature for the claims. Is there payroll or just claims? But, let's go ahead and do both.
Yeah, payroll, yes.
So I'll go ahead and get those signed and keep, keep business moving, so, um, if there's no obje- objections, I'd entertain that motion.
Submove.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. And then also on that, uh, it's a quick update, it's not on the agenda, I'd send an email out, I just want to make sure the ball's still rolling on the, the city zoning, that joint, um, effort.
Right.
If, are we still looking into that, having them help zone, or not zone, but, um, the unsafe building, uh, maintenance?
Back in May, I contacted the mayor and Building Commissioner's Office, and their county attorney was on vacation, he's back. I followed up, and they're holding those discussions, I think.
Okay, all right, just let us know if you need us to help with that, if we're still interested in doing that. Um, I, I think as long as the commissioners are, ha- have total control of the process on, um, you know, which area of the, of the two-mile radius.
Whether we get a deal worked out with them or not, I think we need to have a parallel ordinance, safe building code, anywhere to the city.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I, I agree. My only concern is, do we have resources, or what resources we would need to enforce that ordinance if we do pass it?
Have to have an inspector.
Kind of chicken and the egg.
It is.
It is, you have to have an inspector and everything else.
If we get the city on board with this joint agreement, then they would be our enforcement arm. Otherwise, if we pass the ordinance, then we may be forced to go ahead and bring on someone.
Har somebody, yeah.
And we tried to do that eight, nine months ago, and we just didn't have much success, so. Okay, we'll just stay tuned on that one.
I'll see what I can find out.
No worries. All right, uh, anything else, gentlemen?
All right.
Good morning. Sorry for the late notice, I actually just found out about this yesterday, and I did send a group email to everyone, but I didn't get any responses, so I'm not sure if it didn't go through or what happened, but anyway.
I received it.
We are doing, uh, voting the two Saturdays prior to Election Day at other locations besides the courthouse, not the vote centers, so we're going to have it out at the park as one of the spots this fall, and I wasn't too concerned, because it's early, we already had the spots booked, but they told me yesterday I need to have signed contracts to be able to hold those spots, so that somebody else will still give them away. So, I've got the money and the budget, it's just a matter of getting the contract signed, saying that we are going to use those locations.
So, sounds good, yeah, I got the email, I'm sorry, I didn't...
That's okay.
I didn't know it required a response, but, um...
Do you need these entered, or do you have the contracts?
We have them.
So, yeah, we all received the email, if there's, uh, any questions.
No, I don't have any questions.
If not, I entertain a motion to approve.
Submove.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. You're welcome. They've got me so trained with these sign here stickers, that if there's not one, I'm...
Uh, Chris sent a message.
Do I sign these contracts, or does Lauren?
Chris sent a message that, uh, the milestone, uh, bid needs signed, so, uh, I told Jen that, so if you would add that to your earlier motion, just to approve this, please.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to sign the, uh, milestone contract for the CCMG project.
Submove.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. Okay. Okay. Um, anything else from the audience? CNN, I'd entertain a motion to approve payroll claims and to adjourn the meeting.
Submove.
A motion made by Commissioner Taylor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Arnold, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three-zero. Have a good day.